Folks, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a meeting on specified date, which is thirty, June fifth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P. M. Location four oh seven Main Street, Markville, Texas. Meeting called order. Mike McLeod, Chair here. Sam Houston Point, Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Here. Laura Sanchez Fowler.
Here.
Terry Warner.
Here.
Matthew McGovern, here. Just broke ten. Okay, it's time for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Out for the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the E. Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
You want to say a prayer?
Sure. Um, if you will, I'll place down your hands for the invocation. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the recent work. And Lord God, we do ask for your guidance tonight as we make important decisions. And um, we always thank you for the gift of salvation, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, it's time, it's time for a public comment. Uh, okay. Stephanie Carl, come to the podium and say your piece.
Sir. Hello, neighbor.
Okay, hello.
Neighbors. My name is Stephanie Carl. Um, my family and I have lived in Markville for, in the area for six years. And I know that I have much to learn about planning and zoning, and I hope to learn more tonight. Um, what I do know is that Markville needs to move forward with a keen eye toward curation. We are at a crossroads. In twenty years, do we want to be like Giddings, a town that blurs by in a flash of gas stations and fast food signs built for people to pass through as quickly as possible? Or do we want to be more like Green, a town that's been thoughtfully cultivated to invite people to slow down longer and stay awhile? I understand that a development like the one on the agenda tonight would bring much-needed revenue to Markville. That money could help fix our roads, support public spaces, or provide what I think are essential stipends to our landed officials. But the question remains, is it worth the cost? Markville is in a critical moment. We must focus on creating a sense of arrival, an identity that welcomes people in and reflects what we value. Our small businesses already struggle to compete for visibility. So we have to ask, will this development help or hurt the very heart of Markville? Forward-thinking is essential. Today, that parcel of land sits on the outskirts of Markville, but as our town grows and expands in the coming years, it will likely become a gateway for our community, the first impression for visitors, and a defining feature of our future identity. It will set the tone. And will it tell them that we've entered somewhere special, or just another chain-line corridor like a hundred towns before us? What the council, or sorry, what the committee approves today is not just about a building. It's about the story that we are telling for decades to come. Personally, I can see both sides of this issue. And we may have to take one for the team here in order to put ourselves in a better fiscal position. But the one place that I personally am absolutely unwilling to compromise is on a drive-through. I cannot support a drive-through in our town, not because I'm against convenience, but because I am for something better. Why is fast food drive-through damaging in a town like Markville? Number one, it encourages healthy-unhealthy eating habits, particularly in a community where seventy-five percent of our residents are low-income and already face limited access to fresh nutritious food. This directly contributes to chronic health issues like obese feet, diabetes, and heart disease, as we all know. The library in St. David's holds workshops and health fairs here to support well-being, introducing fast food would undermine those efforts. Number two, it harms local businesses. Duets, the cafe, Red Bar, Hermanos, the taco truck can't compete with the marketing budgets or low prices of national chains. Every dollar spent in a drive-through is a dollar diverted for Markville's local economy. Number three, it increases environmental and visual pollution. Drive-throughs generate excess litter, vehicle emissions from idling, and unsightly sprawl. Right along, what should be our town's key gateway? It creates unnecessary light pollution, bright overhead lights that damage to gray our rural night skies, disrupt wildlife, and diminish the tranquil atmosphere that defines our evenings here. If we truly prioritize the stretch of river that we steward, we must consider this. Also, it weakens the town's visual identity. National franchises, franchises are designed to look the same everywhere. They erase the sense of place. We should be working hard, called faith. They prioritize speed over connection. These businesses are designed for quick turnover, not community. And that's not who we are or what we want to be. And finally, it risks opening the floodgates. Who's to say this development will break the ice for more just like it? Once the precedent is set, it becomes much harder to say no to the next fast station, the next chain, the next trip along. So, I have a few sincere questions um, for the committee. Number one, how much potential revenue are we actually talking about from a development license? And how much of it stays in Markville versus going to outside developers or corporate franchises? Number two, will we have a say in what types of businesses are allowed in this development? Number three, will we have input into the aesthetic of these buildings? Number four, does this development reflect a town with a healthy vision for its future, or one that simply for sale is behind its bitter? And number five, do these businesses exploit or honor Markville? Because the story this development tells will shape how people experience Markville. Will it say this is a town with a soul, with pride, with purpose? Or will it say this is just another place to fill your tank and dump the trash? Let's make sure we're building a future worth staying for. A town where the economy circulates locally, where businesses are built with care to protect our river, honor our history, and invite people to slow down and grieve for me. Let's build a town with a heartbeat, a place that knows exactly what it is and does not compromise a healthy environment or a healthy population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, Joy Youngers, you're up.
Oh, yes.
They're very repeating.
Yes, no, no, I, yeah, I remember, I remember.
Um, hello, Planning and Zoning Committee. Um, my name is Joy Youngers, I live at three oh five Johnson Street. Um, Markville, population approximately uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty. This book ended east and west on Highway eighty, but two gas stations slash convenience stores. And again, north and south by gas convenience stores on FM one forty-two and FM one hundred and seventy-eight. We have five restaurants. We have uh, three additional new ones in Maxwell. And again, our population is one thousand and twenty. Personally, I don't think we need either. And what we could really use is a hardware store, or a lumber store, or a nursery, or a gardening center, in my mind, in my mind. Both proposed developments overlap with portion of Markville's wellhead protection area. I have provided that map for you. A wellhead protection area is that area regulated to prevent contamination of the wells supplying a public water system. The EPA defines a wellhead protection area as the surface and subsurface areas surrounding a water well or wellfield supplying a public water system through which contaminants are reasonably likely to move forwards and reach such water well or wellfield. So I would ask the city to think twice before allowing any industrial or light industrial uses in that area. Furthermore, if the powers that be seek fit to line Highway eighty or scenic corridors with strip malls, then they should be held to the same standards regarding visibility, finance, lighting, and compatibility safeguards that our generals. Thanks again for your time, your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, young man.
Uh, good evening, members of the committee, city staff, and co-Markville residents. My name is Fernando, and uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to begin by making it clear that I'm not here to speak for or against uh, the proposed specific use permit, uh, application currently under review. My sole purpose here is just to provide additional context, uh, information that I also give the community, uh, a broader, more informed perspective on what the committee is being asked to vote on tonight. Uh, to help illustrate the importance of context, perspective, and information, I'd like to briefly refer to image, uh, an image I brought with me. Uh, it's a photo of Prince William taken from two different angles at this exact same moment in time, and I'll show you that, that picture. So, in one, it appears to be a very grotesque, sorry, grotesque image, right? Where, where he's showing, you know, a finger against, against it, right? However, if you look at this from a different angle, it's clear that he's actually holding up three fingers to indicate the number three. Same moment, same time, completely different understanding. It's a simple image, but a powerful reminder that how we see something depends on our understanding. And sometimes we need to uh, get additional information to view or to get the full picture. So, now turning to the, the matter at hand, the property question is currently so C-one commercial. According to the city's land use table, a gas station and convenience store are used as, that are permissible in C-one zoning. If they were not allowed, then an NP or not permitted would be there, right? That is not the case here. Instead, there's an S, which stands for specific use. And all that means is that the proponent will require to get an additional permit to ensure that um, what their proposal is aligned with the zoning and with uh, the needs of the community. Now, to put that in everyday terms, right? Uh, and something that's probably a bit more relatable for everybody, if you own a property that's so S.S. or single-family one, you have the right to build a house on that one. Your neighbor may not like it, and maybe you posted that, and that's fine. Uh, but as long as you comply with the code of the ordinances, you're allowed to proceed. That doesn't mean your neighbor is a bad neighbor, or that you're a bad neighbor, right? You're just following the rights that you're entitled for. And that doesn't mean that you cannot speak to your neighbor, see what the issues are, and try to find a solution, find middle ground. Right, so after, that doesn't mean that if you own a single-family home, you, you are allowed to proceed after receiving the necessary building permits. It's the same situation here. The applicant is not proposing a use of what is already allowed. They're simply requesting a permit that confirms their intended use space within, within the city's zoning expectation symbols. Now, the role of this committee tonight, and in, you know, the importance of your vote, is to determine whether the specific proposal aligns with the intent of C-one zoning and with the needs of the community. From what I understand, and you know, it will be up to the applicants to, you know, provide a better description of what they're aiming to do. But from what I understand, the applicant's not proposing a facility meant for eighteen-wheelers, heavy industrial trucks. This is not intended to be a major truck stop. It's intended, from what I can see, it appears to be a neighborhood-oriented gas station and convenience shop, designed to provide local and accessible place for residents to fill their cars and access daily necessities. Surrounding business spaces may also bring more local amenities and convenience to our residents. An example of that, and you know, my wife's the, the owner of a, a big preschool, right? When she started to own that preschool, many people would say, hey, you know, there's already a lot of preschools there, right? You know, we don't need another one in this area. But it's not just about the preschool, it's about the people that are applying for it, and how it's gonna be delivered. Right now, that preschool is thriving, and it's because she decided to do it focusing upon providing a solution for the needs that were not being catered for those parents. So, um, lastly, uh, all I want to say is that it's important to understand that even if this specific use permit is approved tonight, or approved with conditions, that doesn't mean that construction begins tomorrow. The applicant will still need to go through further permitting, uh, engineering analysis, and building permits that are gonna pass through planning and zoning as well. So this is just one first step. Um, what is being decided this evening is whether this particular use in this location with this intent aligns with the community's expectation and zoning framework that already exists in this place. Thank you for the time, your service on this committee. I hope this added context is helpful for residents and decision-makers, and allows to provide a better view of the whole picture.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so it's public hearing, it's the application for specific use, specific use permit applicant, First, First Serra Capital LLC, location, parcel ID two seven eight nine seven. Request use permit to allow drive-through window. Public hearing, the public is invited to speak on the proposed zoning change. Now, y'all are gonna do a presentation, correct? So I guess it's that time.
Okay. I have a public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I, so I filled out the paper.
We still, we're still doing the city council meeting afterwards? Is it for this one? Okay.
Okay.
My back, I put out the city council one.
I'll stand right here, Sonneville, over four one three Newark Bridge River Road. So, like a lot of the statements that everybody was explaining, yes, I agree, I'm here, I'm a representative, I'm here. But then also, what Bernardo was saying is also true. There's everything that's in, you know, our ordinances that are allowed and not allowed. Um, but what can have concern to me is like, all of the, you know, discussions that were going on about the meetings, the time of the meetings, the way that they're listed. If you see, like, we're supposed to have our city council meeting starting at six thirty. Right now, we have our planning and zoning meeting at six thirty. And then on our other agenda, we have the city council meeting starting at six thirty. If you look at the top of that agenda, if you could scroll up to the top of that agenda on here, it has a date that it is. If you scroll to the bottom of it, if you scroll to the bottom of it, it's gonna tell you when it was posted. It was posted on, on Monday, June fifth, at six P. M. So what I'm trying to say is that, that's the way city business is being conducted, that's the way planning and zoning is being conducted. Uh, look at whenever you turned in your application, and if they didn't respond within the allotted amount of time, then your application should already be approved. So, I mean, business needs to be done on a regular basis, consistently, in a manner that's expected. So we don't pick and choose when we're gonna follow the law and when we're not gonna follow the law.
Okay. You wanna talk? Go ahead, just say.
I'm not here to speak for or against this project. Because I really, I, I don't know nothing about it. I don't think the community knows, everybody deserves to know about it. But I do know one thing, and this piece of property may not fall into that. But when the Walton group came here and actually traded a ranch out in Lees County for most of that highway frontage, then they bought some. I've been here fourteen years, that was a couple of years before I got here. But the Walton group did a deal with the city council at that time, which was a very bad deal.
That's the point behind that.
None of y'all were here, none of y'all were. But in that deal, all that, that frontage, highway frontage, which is the best property that any city can have. I made my living building commercial property. I made my living renting commercial property. I've known a little bit about commercial property. But they gave away that property. The deal that the Walton group made and the city council accepted then was that there would be no property taxes collected. Now, I don't know if this piece of property falls into that, may not, maybe right beside that. But the potential planning and zoning is here, the city council's here. I'm telling you, that's fourteen, fifteen years ago, the Walton group has done nothing that they said they were gonna do. Y'all need to look at rescinding that contract so that when something is built, the city can get revenue from property taxes. And the burden of the city won't be on uh, homeowners.
Great.
Okay? I pay a lot of homeowners taxes, but I guarantee I pay a heck of a lot of commercial property taxes. There's a difference. And the city is missing the boat if they don't get on that and get it rescinded, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, what about you all?
You know, I, I've been uh, kind of avoiding all these city council meetings for quite a while. But apparently, you know, I've been here for, gosh, eleven years, two of those years I sat on the city council. And, and other cities. At the time, this city was in bankruptcy. You know, we, we get a lot on our own as city council members to keep this thing afloat. So here, here's just a thought I have. I know you have a planning and zoning committee, and it, uh, the only people on it are the city council. I would suggest to you guys, you should reach out to some of the folks in this small little city that wanna become part of the planning and zoning committee, so we, they can have a
Okay.
opinion on what you guys do. Because apparently, in the tight-knit, cut general law city, you guys don't have to put together a commission uh, that involves the general public of this city, if you will. You can just take it upon yourselves, the city council, to do that to us. So, I'm just thinking that defeats the whole purpose. There's no input from anybody outside of the elected officials that we elected, the city council, and no private citizen sitting on a planning and zoning commission. You have a part, I guess you call it a board, you have a, a group of board that consists of people in the general public of the city. Planning and zoning committee, you're seeing it right here. Not one of us sits on it. And I don't think you've reached out to, to the general public for that simple purpose. Which would benefit, you know, the thought. Even, there are some folks in this town that are pretty well knowledgeable on construction. Uh, we've got some, uh, some knowledgeable people as far as engineers and stuff that can cater, put their input into the planning and zoning committee. But it's never been done here. You know, it's always left on the city council to do that, and you guys are just elected officials.
Do you know why it's never been done?
Trying to go through it. That's just my thought, you know, which is okay.
Uh, we, this, the resident states your name and where you live for our record.
So, I'm David Aguilar, I live over Butterfly Meadows. And, and the reason I'm talking about the zoning and planning commission is in the, since nineteen eighty-two, the city came into existence. And I don't, before my time, I didn't get here until twenty fourteen. My whole thought was that, wow, this is a neat little town. It's a town, but it's a city also. And the council has never, well, I won't say has never, has attempted to improve the infrastructure of the smaller city. You have issues that keep on piling up. Uh, I could go with the waste water treatment center, whatever you wanna call that thing over there. It's in prior, dire need of some work. There's also the list stations, and, and here's something else I wanna bring to your attention, is the planning and zoning. But I know there's a little discrepancy on this bond that you guys got to improve Northwest River Road. You moved it to the tree, the shoe tree, because you ran out of funds. But here's, here's a thought. Proposal A for the county of Conwell County is gonna fix County Road one oh three. It goes from Quail Run all the way to nineteen eighty-four to the stoplight. They're not gonna tear down trees, they're not gonna dig up the, the water lines, they're not gonna uh, interrupt the sewer system, they're just gonna resurface that whole road. It's about a little over a mile and quarter, for two million, a little over two million dollars. And they're gonna do, we're the last on the list, and they're gonna do it. So the bickering that I see here amongst the residents on Northwest River Road, that they don't want the trees to be taken out, just to buy a hole. They don't want, you know, to have to pay. No, I'm not gonna say have to pay. They don't want the city to be responsible for digging up the sewer lines, digging up the water lines, and paying for all that. And then they try to potter off on the water company for them to pick up the bill. Northwest River Road, County Road one oh three, doesn't have a problem. There's people that live on that road that aren't complaining to the county. They're, oh shit, you know, darn. Tear down all these trees, you're gonna dig up the road, we're gonna have to pay for your sewer line, water lines, none of that. They're just gonna come in here, take the asphalt off, put a crown on the road, put that asphalt back down, and it's a chip and seal all, all the way to Quail Run. So my thought was this. Back in two thousand fifteen, we had a guy come out to this little town that I found to resurface from nineteen eighty-four all the way to nineteen seventy-nine for half a million dollars. Let's do the whole stretch of road, chip and seal. He said, I put in those colts on the side where it need be, so the water would flow accordingly. And here you guys got six million dollars, and you're bickering about that little section of road, where it'd be so easy just to tear up the road, use the same stuff that's down there, lay it back down, and have a new road. But the key to the whole thing is maintenance. If you don't have any maintenance on chip and seal, it lasts for, I think it's three to five years, and starts to just, like everything else, because of being from the weather, you need maintenance program. And what I can see in this little city is that it was a problem. The contract to plan, if you will. Back when I sat on city council, I ran into three of these upperhand plans for the city Markville, different of administrations. Each one of them had the same end to it, does a story, that had a brilliant plan, but there's not enough money generated in there to go forward with the plan. So now you have another one. I think Mr. DeVity put one together. Same principle. The plan is great, but the end result is, where do you get the funds from? Where does that come from? There is not, not enough money generated. Fix anything here, and you're more or less on this road. And I really have to say this. Instead of trying to fix the roads in this little, small city to make it more appealing, not to take the trees down, not to, you know, destroy stuff, just re-asphalt the roads, it would entice, in my eyes, other people that would come here to enjoy the river, if you will. And not be if they're colored to get here because the road is so graphic.
Uh, sir, Ernest, could you state your name and your address?
Ernest Fider, I live at sixty Willie White, uh, here in
Aris Painter, I live at sixty willing wide uh here in Martinville. Glad to talk to the management, we got no power hat, we only have one power hat.
Okay.
Okay, you know, and and just like I say this also, because I live in Butterfly Meadows. And in Butterfly Meadows, when I first moved here, I still quiet neighborhood. You know, we don't have a sign that signifies that Butterfly Meadows. I think there was a couple administrations that didn't even know that Butterfly Meadows was in the city of Martinville. They thought it was in the county. There there is not one. Well, there is now, because I had done, when I was on the city council, with a street light right there at the corner of Highway eighty and Ladybug Lane. Because the only way you knew that there was a road there at night was by the reflection of the stop sign pole that had the tape on it, that was the only thing. In Hopson Ranch, the light at that corner at the time was put up by one of the residents in the neighborhood that paid for that light out of his pocket to have that intersection lit up.
Eleven years, he paid for it, eleven years, he paid his life from the rest down. And when I found out about that, I I was in the, when I found out about that, I was still on the council at that time. And I went to him and I said, the city's not gonna take over that light, I'll take it over. And the city took it over. That light's not in Hopson Ranch, there's not a street light in Hopson Ranch paid for by the city of Martinville. The light in front of my house, I paid for. We have no street lights and no point of fire.
I can't, we got, we got a long media, I hate to keep wrapping, you know.
We exist over there on the other side of the road.
I understand.
We pay a lot of taxes to the city of Martinville, and what did we get? We get a trash can. Okay, and and we're starting to get some reliable police protection over there. But the street Butterfly Meadows, I I don't know who this person is that came into that neighborhood and tried to fill them damn holes, potholes in that neighborhood. All they did was all every pothole in that neighborhood is concave with brandy mask open. Because not any one of these people on this city council go to that neighborhood and say, hey, look, wow, it puts a filling in the potholes. Wait a minute, that pothole is concave, who's the idiot that did that? You just let it go out, throw the stuff in, either makes a bump or they're concave. So what you, what we're looking at in Butterfly Meadows is you get up, go drive through, and look.
I'll make a note, and our guy goes repair, and I'll make suggestions, or I'll tell him to go ahead and build it up. Okay, uh are y'all ready for your presentation? Okay, bring it on, bring it on.
Um, look at us, we need to go.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So you can just look at this one, and I can say where we're at. Yeah, yeah.
I'll just introduce myself, we're waiting. Good evening, commissioners, good evening, members of the community, my name's Amanda Brown uh with H D Brown, Councilwoman. Um in front of you this evening for really two applications um at the location indicated on this map here. So this is a six acre tract, uh next slide please, I'm sorry.
Amanda.
You can take it.
Go ahead.
Yes, could this go?
Yeah.
Am I clicking or scrolling?
Whatever works.
I'll just scroll.
Okay.
Excellent.
So again, in front of you this evening for really two applications for this proposed project. First, it's called a specific use permit, and the second is um approval to get a development within the scenic corridor, which runs the location map um on the north side of Highway eighty.
Okay, real quick, you guys, can you explain to people where where it runs, so they can put a perspective right there, down down below. The water, keep going down, keep going down.
Probably, probably not even there.
That's not on there.
Oh, further down. Okay, we got, okay.
I'm trying to get rid of the marker, this is a church here.
There's Jehovah's Church, right?
Okay.
So then, those two parcels, basically, one of the other parcel, it butts up to Quail Run.
Okay.
This is yours, okay.
Right, right, right.
Just clarify.
Yeah, so for this particular item, we're just discussing one six acre site.
Got it.
Okay.
There's a map right there.
Oh, okay, it's on a better map, okay.
Yeah.
Uh so this is the city's zoning map, that basically.
I ain't gonna interrupt you, but that's Quail Run, I believe, down down below. Get people to see what you're talking about, see, right, keep going, right, right there.
Oh, here, okay.
That's what I'm blinking, everybody can see this, that's what the blinking yellow light is. For it, and and perspective.
Um so we are, uh this is the zoning map of the city, so we are currently designated as C one commercial. And we are within the scenic overlay that basically requires a certificate of appropriateness, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Um but to respond to some of the comments I heard from the speakers is that both of these applications, the intent of these is to be able to control how many of these uses that you have, not just on this corridor, but in the city in general. So if anybody has zoned C one and wants to do a fuel sale, sea store type development, you have to come through this process, it's a public hearing, it has a discretionary approval. So it is a possibility for the city to say, we only want so many gas stations in so many proximities to one another, and you can control that. It's not by rights. Um the second thing I wanted to highlight in in uh is the scenic overlay. So the certificate of appropriateness, I'll get into this in a little bit. It really, the intent of that really is to kind of control the architectural aesthetic. And to make sure that buildings are set back, and these two applications um do give both the city and the community to have input into both of those things. Did you get the development side, this is my new presentation?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's okay, I'll I'll wing it, I'll wing it, okay.
Quick question, I think they're the documentation. You've got two sites, it'd be nice if we could have the whole, your first section, and then by doing your your retention on the other one. It would be nice, if you could show, is there a picture of both of them together?
Well, this is our only site.
Okay.
This is it, this is the whole six acres.
That's all of them?
Yes.
Uh it's a little confusing coming on the on the on your drawing, so it is.
Okay, um so I previously put in the slide, I wanna talk a little bit about kind of the development process in general and where we fit within the development process. So the the very first step is called entitlements, and that includes things like a rezoning, that includes things like a specific use permit, a special use permit, um a certificate of appropriateness, all of the things that we are in front of you this evening to talk about. Um which basically say, yes, you are permitted to have that land used generally. So that's step one. And in particular, to raw land. Um step two is the subdivision process. So after the entitlements are completed, then the subdivision process will begin. That's when we have our civil engineer, who's here with me tonight, living with L J A, will start dividing up the land um to create what is called a legal lot. The city is involved with reviewing that, it ensures that it's a legal safe lot, it meets all of the city's code and criteria in terms of uh lot size and width and frontage onto the right of way. Um after the subdivision process, you have a legal lot, then you can pursue your site development permit. Uh again, it's a building here, puts a site development permit together, designs the drainage ponds, locates where the buildings are gonna go, um puts the designs of the landscaping is gonna go, gets approval from this um city or state, so where the driveway is gonna go. And the city reviews all of that as well to approve it, to make sure, again, that it complies with all the codes and codes and requirements of the city. Um and and text doc, of course, as well. After that, you pull building permit, after that, then you start construction, and after that, you get something called a certi- certificate of occupancy, which will allow people to occupy the building. So this is a very long process, it takes years typically, and we are very in the very, very first stage of this. But I just wanted to kind of make clear, I know we had sent some questions earlier in the week. A subdivision legally plotted lot is not required for an S U P, but it is required for us to get a site development permit. And we will be pursuing that, hopefully, after we're able to get surety on our ability to do this particular thing. Um so this is a concept plan here, I wanna talk a little bit about the uh specific use permit. So the specific use permit is intended to, again, kind of control how many of these uses you have in your city um and to ensure that flow and circulation and location is ideal for us. It's a very ideal location for this particular use. Um it's located on a major highway. We are compliant with all distance and setback requirements. We um have really wanted to create a necessary and needed kind of commercial amenity for the community, not just in terms of the sea store, but also providing retail suites um that are included in in the building, you can see them um kind of to the right there. And that's to allow for small businesses or businesses to come in that maybe don't wanna build their own building, but it'll have a tenant space available for somebody to come in and to be able to immediately occupy that space.
Well, I I had a question on the first slide, that our first one you showed us of the six acre tract itself. Could you go back to that?
Sure.
Is where the track starts, is it on Highway eighty, or was there a big green space?
No, it's on Highway eighty. So uh this is not to scale, so this is my fancy handiwork on PDF, so let's this is, but generally, this is location, we do have frontage on Highway eighty.
Oh, no, it was the second one you you had where it.
Same story, it's equally.
Okay, so, yeah, I I I I was confused, but.
Sorry, yeah.
There, okay, thanks.
I hate that, I hate bringing this up, I was, this is what I was talking about.
No, that's okay.
I was a little confused, because you said the preliminary draft discussion only, and here doesn't, it doesn't show the filling.
We have, we have, we've gone around.
That's what confused me, because I see this, and I then I see the fillings, the the gas, the gas pumps.
Let me hold this up so I can just make sure.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about the.
This isn't, this is a different agenda items, it's not our application. So
There's two.
Right, there's two, and and I believe, I believe this is only for a certificate of appropriateness in this evening.
That is great, that's not for a specific use permit, that is only to ensure that the architectural aspect of what's being made is.
So is that their property or the other six acres?
So that's their, they're the applicants.
That's for the others, not for your property. Well, thanks, I was a little confused. Thanks for that certi-.
Partly for the confusion.
Thanks for that certification, because I didn't see the, I didn't see the pumps, so I now understand.
We're separate.
A little confused, okay.
That's okay.
Thank you. A woman there, oh, you could keep talking.
Okay, we're, okay, yeah, so again, providing, you know, commercial amenities for for the community, giving it in addition to passersby, but also for the community as well. Um and as uh both in terms of just sheer improvements to the property, um creating additional property tax value that will be contributing money to the city in addition to the sales tax that will be um generated by sales to this facility. And I would also note that this property is currently having exempt, which is basically a process of you are an agricultural use, um you basically don't pay property taxes at all, so this project and development will do what?
Do how bad.
No, such as.
Oh, you may let, okay. Um, I wanna put you on my payroll.
Yeah.
Uh so with this development, that'll eliminate that type, that tax exemption, and really create a good generator of of both sales tax and property tax for the city.
I hate to interrupt you again, but Mr. Painter made a a comment about years ago that they don't, that they don't have to pay property taxes on commercial. That's that y'all are gonna be paying property taxes, you're gonna be paying sales tax, all that, just to clear, just to clarify that.
Paying all the taxes, we are not in any sort of tax abatement agreement or anything like that with the building.
Thanks for that clarification, appreciate it.
So um this time, I wanna talk a little bit about the certificate of appropriateness appropriateness within the scenic overlay. Sorry, I'm trying to um within the scenic overlay, so again, the intent of this is to really protect um the the visual sightlines down down the road. Um and these are common in many cities and um really try to set the buildings back, landscaping, kind of control the architectural features, and that's exactly what the city's coaches here. So not only are we compliant with the um the the corridor standards, there's a set of development standards that you have to meet, we um attempted to exceed all of them to the best of our ability. It is a large six acre site where um have a minimized and reduced amount of impervious cover. The requirement is to have a twenty foot landscape buffer along eighty here, uh which we've shown there, within that landscape buffer, there will be a shade tree and five shrubs every thirty linear feet. So you're gonna get good landscaping um added along with this development. That's in addition to all the other landscaping requirements within the development itself, as you can see some of them, some of the plantings. Um we've also went above and beyond to increase the setbacks for these buildings, to ensure that they're set back far from from the highway. So the the requirement in the scenic overlay, I think standard C one code is like fifteen feet. When you're in the scenic overlay, that is increased um to fifty. And we have increased that to eighty-five feet for the canopy and a hundred and seventy-seven feet building itself. So to really push that back as far as we could. Um additionally, there is parking that's allowed within the street yard uh front yard setback. Um and we were very conscious to make sure there weren't any, there was no parking within that street yard setback as well. The final thing that I wanted to talk about with the.
One question, that retention pond?
Uh huh.
Is that, is that, is that adequate, or is that, does the engineer, can he clarify? I guess that's down the road, but to make sure that retention pond is adequate adequate enough.
It's um it's, that is down the road, so we're in the entitlement phase, and then we'll do the subdivision and site cleaning, and that's when Olivia will be doing her civil engineering, and that's where the drainage studies will happen.
Okay.
And the pond will be designed, but I do, I'm not sure if there's, um in terms of flooding, when that is designed, it, the the added impervious cover, that pond has to treat and detain all of that, that runoff that comes from that. So there's no increased flooding or drainage coming off of this site.
So with the setback, you said you had an increased setback, but on your left side there, you have the church, and then you have the Skyview Residential Development there. There's a lot of mobile homes there and homes, and so you'll be set further back, which means the noise and the light and all that stuff will actually be closer to the development and less farther, less distance from the highway itself. So you're sort of positioning it to where it might interfere with that residential development. I I don't know why you chose that tract of land adjacent to a current residential development, is there a reason behind that?
Yeah, I think um for, so in terms of the proximity to the residential, our property line, so that's not even building to building, it's almost three hundred feet away. So there's a pretty significant distance from um from this particular development and the residential community. We we, you know, obviously did look at that, and that is down, and wanted to make sure and consider um the adjacent community, um and just considering the the three hundred feet distance, there's also a large power line and easement there as well um that that is between those two developments, was our thought process behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So the other, the final component of the scenic corridor is the architectural aesthetics. So we originally had a fairly modern design um for this particular um site, for the sea store. Um and uh after working with staff and really understanding the the code better, and really digging into the strategic twenty twenty-five strategic plan, um kind of went back to the drawing board, and we did our architectural aesthetics and showed that it aligns more with um the goals of the strategic plan and the code. Um so working closely with staff to understand um that really kind of where we are now is the ar- the desired architectural aesthetic of Martinville as a whole. So um more brick, uh more metal accents to really kind of speak to the agrarian history of Martinville is what we tried to incorporate into the rendering that you see here. So this is, again, a a brick with parapet similar to the building that we're actually in right now. And then on the awnings here, you can see uh having metal accents there as well to really kind of create the aesthetic uh that was told to us, you know, via staff, and then also in the strategic plan.
Hey, you know, in our, we had the other day, and I said, I said this multiple times, you know, Santa Fe is beautiful city, and they have the same type of design, they have adobe structures, and it really, it would be awesome if all of our commercial and looked like, you know, these bread brick buildings all the way down, it would, it would really put Martinville on the map. Instead of like, you know, metal buildings and, you know, truck stops and all that kind of stuff. But to do the aesthetics is a really, I think it's a real positive note by having it look like our downtown, so, yeah. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, I like the brick, but I don't know about that archway. I mean, that's, that looks like you're going into East Village or something. I mean, I I don't know why you have such a high archway there. Is that?
He's very vegetarian.
I don't know. I I like the brick and and the canopies in 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 the front, but I wonder about that archway.
Okay.
It seems so high there. I don't know why it's so high above our waves in the sky there. You're not even incorporating that brick structure. I mean, not there, it's just like a.
I think, um, I think we would be open to potentially lowering that if the commission wants to, if there was a motion to approve or to make a positive recommendation for this. With the condition that that arch is lowered a certain amount, um, we could definitely go back and look at that before we go to council.
No, I.
Which my understanding.
Can we talk?
No.
Can you ask questions?
Uh, let's, let's let her get through her presentation.
I'm done, I'm done.
Are you?
I closed my presentation, let me know.
Are you complete with your presentation?
Yes, and again, our engineers here as well, um, so we're, um, if we'll take any questions.
Go right ahead, you have the floor. Go ahead, Mark, you got the floor.
What's going to do to the highway traffic?
That was my question too. Do what?
You're going to have to have a turn lane for both directions?
So this is.
You got to go to Tech Stop.
We have to go to Tech Stop. So ultimately, so that again is something that takes place in the subdivision and site plan phases. And tech, it will be completely up to Tech Stop where that curb path goes. And so it'll be designed to be in the absolute safest location where that text, the Tech Stop engineers want it to go. And that, that depends on opposing driveways and driveway separations from other highway, um, from other curb paths on the road. Um, and and ultimately we'll have to be, we'll be getting a permit from them. And then any sort of diesel lanes or anything like that that need to be incorporated will happen at that time as well.
I have a follow up question to the traffic thing. This is more for the city council. I'd like them to, I urge them to consider, uh, what this does to the citizens getting out both in the morning. And I've had trouble getting out of our neighborhood towards San Market at four P M. There shouldn't be that kind of traffic. This is right in the zone where we are the most backed up, where I would be stuck for ten to fifteen minutes from Lockhart Street to nineteen eighty four and one ten. And so I do urge them to consider that in their decision. Thanks, Nora.
Yes, speaking of the traffic, Tech Stop and the fact that you guys got two different groups that are playing in side by side, two different entrances. Sound like you know the deal with Tech Stop. They are not, uh, they have, they get picky about how many entrances off the highway.
Oh, yeah.
So just, even though you want to treat these two separate, I urge everybody to to think of them, maybe it's if we're going to be compatible.
Sure, and and Tech Stop will be doing that as well. So we'll, that we'll definitely be working closely with them on both of our exits.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanted to make a quick comment that Tech Stop is going to be doing a significant study next year of eighty from the part where they stopped. Through the end of town and then onto Luling. So I just met with Commissioner Therryo the other day and that he was talking about the fact that CAPCOC is going to pay for that for us. Um, when I met with Tech Stop a couple of weeks ago, they indicated that they would prioritize uh, your neighborhoods. I pointed out and requested that they please prioritize what to do about traffic coming in and out of the neighborhoods. Um, as well as better representation of pedestrian walkways for safe passage more than just the one. And that the one is invisible practically because it's so worn down and lighting. So they're going to be studying all of that thoroughly. I'm sure they'll make sure that it corresponds with your application at the same time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, two part question. Um, one, I'm curious, you talked about the increased tax revenue for Dale. I'm wondering if you have um, done, uh, if you brought the numbers on that and what that might look like for our town. And number two, um, if you could speak a little bit more about the environmental aspects and impacts of a development like this. The lighting, like the hours of operation, um, how much impervious cover that would align with the city's laws on impervious cover. Um, I know you said you worked to reduce it, but. Uh, yes, so as far as the tax revenue, um, we have not done a study on that. It's very, very dependent on what the appraisal district values the land after the improvements are done. Um, and then after that, what our sales end up being is what will end up giving us a better idea. So it's hard to kind of ballpark that. Um, but we can definitely maybe give some sort of numbers to the city between now and city council, um, to get a better idea of what the, of the implications. I don't know, does this, do you guys do um, studies like that? Our economic development studies?
I mean, I think we're working on one right now with the whole length heard in that situation. But other than that, from my knowledge.
Okay.
It's in the worst essentially.
We can, we can definitely try to ballpark it a little bit. Um, and then I'm going to just finish real quick and then you'll be next. And um, so as far as the safety, the hours of operation, the impervious cover, the lighting, the signage. Um, the city has rules and regulations that, you know, because we're in the full purpose city, there are already rules and regulations in place for all of those things. And so um, we, we're going to be in compliance with all the lighting requirements, in compliance with all the previous cover requirements. Um, are, I think we're at about fifty percent of these covers, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, okay, and I believe it's like eighty or ninety is is permitted on a C one site. And so that's what I mean by reduced impervious cover.
Impervious cover is on, what does impervious cover?
For C one.
C one. Let me look it up real quick.
Put him on the spot.
And to just get, get back to Tech Stop of, get, spend your time with them because, you know, like Quell Run, they should, they need to run, they need a right turn line. There's been multiple accidents there. Yeah, so good luck. Tech, Tech Stop's difficult, really are difficult. We have, as you know, we have no control over highway eighty fours entrances and all that. That's totally Tech Stop, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, if you're talking about your off the catch room.
Uh huh.
Okay, Wembley and also Lakeway have all their buildings very, very strict. If you want to find McDonald's, they don't have this big giant golden orange, there's a little bitty tiny gold thing that looks like a golden orange. A little bit small brown put inside and it's golden oranges. Also H E G is very, very, the letters H E B is very small. Those are wonderful, and it's the whole city uh, that is designed there. Martin Dale not wanting to investigate how they did.
Okay.
So, so in regards to uh, this tax and income, um, Commander mentioned the property is currently some agriculturally exempt. So there's practically minimal amount of taxes paid currently. Uh, I would assume that with that, you know, development, once, once it's done, you know, it's, I don't know how much it would be valued, but it it would be, I was playing significant. Do we sound all the dollar amount, but it's significant compared to now.
But it would be helpful to say, you know, we ballpark a million dollars annually to the city for improvement. I think that would be very informative, so we'll see what we, if we can ballpark.
Hey, I got a quick question. What might be, if anybody else want to speak?
I wanted to ask you something, Mike. So in relation to the development that was being discussed already, uh, what is the proximity of where these are going to be? And this is with the um, the bracket investments, the one thousand three hundred and seventy six full lot.
That, that thing goes on the back burner, there's no up.
But it's still on highway eight.
Yeah, but that's, that thing, that's a whole nother subject.
Where in proximity is it?
Oh, it's, that's down towards Luling, they're down towards Luling.
But some of it's still in Martin Dale.
Uh, so, a very little, most, most of DTJ, that's a whole other subject and I don't know if it's, you know.
That's the wastewater.
Yeah, it's by the wastewater point.
Okay, it's right here, it says that it is Tonsi Farm. And that is going to be the two hundred and thirty six lots, the thirty five.
So, Sonia, I hate to kind of rip, but we're, was this kind of, when do you kind of stay on this subject?
I just wanted to see where it was.
Okay, okay.
It's, 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 it's closer to going towards Luling, Raptin. And Raptin is the property just to the west of the wastewater plant.
But some of it's in Martin Dale.
Yeah, the, on the frontage. Yeah, the frontage on both sides, they own property on both sides, but the, the property that's further out, they, they D N X from the.
That was the ETJ.
You're on house, yeah, you know, they eat, they D N, they remove inside of them.
So.
From the ETJ.
Any questions about her, her particular projects, Sonia?
I'm done.
Sir, go right ahead.
Um, I'm a, I'm a dark sky, I kind of got a.
Oh, we have, that's a good point.
I was just curious about like, you know, the, the thing that gets put up in the audience, sir, on all night.
Uh huh.
It's pretty dark out here.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
That's ordinances, dark sky, we have a dark sky ordinance. Good point.
We'll comply with it.
Okay.
And then that's, I've, I've, I've worked with this client on several projects and that's a standard. I mean, they're all shut down, shut off, cut off lighting. Sometimes we'll do um, uh, kind of dimmers and things like that. So we're definitely going to be compliant with ours and all of other ordinances.
Could you, could you just one favor, just kind of explain to the public here the process, like we're, we're doing a special use permit? And then the next stage, at the next stage of this project, I know, just kind of.
She, she told us that.
Please, if you want, if y'all want to hear that again, fine. Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point though, like the lighting and the signage and the impervious cover, that is all, you know, we're at zoning and entitlements. That's all with the site plan, which is after the subdivision. So that'll all be reviewed in, by the city, like we're, they're going to be, we're going to be free to apply all of that. And Olivia's plans will be reviewed by the city to ensure that. And just one more point on the lighting is that, you know, that's hard to regulate by zoning, it's more of a behavioral thing. And so the fact that there are ordinances in place in the city for lighting, if it's really bright or something shining right in your yard, you can call the city and say, hey, they're out of compliance with our dark skies ordinance. And the city has the authority to come out and enforce it, so.
One last thing. Yeah, just elaborate about what the business is. You talked about the retail space for other people, I forgot, gas and drive-throughs. I want to know specifically like pumps and.
Yeah, so.
What are you talking about? Is it going to be convenience store, what, what's drive-through is going to be?
So, so my client. Oh, go ahead. If you hit the plus at the top of the, right there, yep. And then just, yep, just. Right. Okay, so um, this is all intended to be developed all at the same time. So my, my client is a, not only a developer, but an owner and manager of C stores with associated facilities. And so they don't just build these and sell them and they're off to the next. They build them and they own them, they have man, in-house managers to maintain them, um, and they own them forever. And so that's where the, with the purpose of the C store. I think a couple of other unique things is um, that, and this is really just a trend in C stores generally, but really providing more, um, you know, casual eating food, sandwiches, kitchens, things. Uh, fresh produce is being provided at the, um, so it's not your kind of standard gas station with just Doritos and Cheetos. It's like um, kind of prepared foods, things like that. So we're currently proposing six pumps, um, so that would be twelve total on each side, right? Okay. Um, and then the two retail spaces is.
Real quick, is it gas and diesel or just gas?
Uh, standard gas.
Standard gas, no diesel, okay.
Yeah, there's no facilities here for, you know, semi truck.
Good.
Fueling that.
Okay.
Do you know how deep those tanks are?
I do not. So the tanks are um, heavily regulated by T C U Q, the Texas Commissioner on Environmental Quality. Um, so those will be designed by a different, I mean, you don't do those, do you? Okay, so that, there's a whole nother kind of consultant team that designs those underground tanks. Um, and those are during the construction, there's an inspector that comes out every month to ensure that it's being installed properly. And then they're reviewed annually by T C U Q. Um, and then the two retail suites here, uh, we're hoping to kind of build those spaces out again to have available um, kind of tenant space to be able to get new retailers to kind of complement the C store. And it's the same for the detached restaurants as well.
Don't have a custom of a plan, anybody waiting in the wings to go in there?
Correct.
And is, you know, how to completely vary to the idea of having gas and convenience store?
Yes, yes. What about the drive-through? Um, so the two, so those are intended to hopefully be fast casual restaurants. We would love to be able to be marketable, um, to have the option for there to be a drive-through. Um, but you know, we're not, we, we don't have a tenant in tow that wants to do a drive-through. We definitely like to have that as an option to make it more marketable. Um, the last thing we want is to have a vacant building. So um, we're hoping to get it filled up for um, with, with hopefully fast casual.
Just a, as a comment, I don't know, as you said, you don't have a tenant, but you know, sometimes there's like banks that have, you know, drive-through. So I don't know if that, I'm not a type for that. Uh, but you know, there could be multiple things that.
A pharmacy, something.
Pharmacy.
And that express would be nice. Okay, express.
What are some fast casual examples? That sounds so nice.
It's fast, it's fast food.
What does that mean?
It's like Panera Bread or a sandwich shop or coffee shop, like a Joe's Coffee or.
You have a coffee shop.
You have any coffee shops you have in the block?
Three, four, three, you got the, we have Barnes and right there. You want to get coffee later, it's right there. Some people seem happy to have a car. Yeah, I don't, has any research been done online on how much traffic, what your potential business would be?
How much it would generate?
Yeah, how much, how much business do you expect to get on that stretch?
Not yet. So in terms of traffic, so when we're doing the site planning and working with Tech Stop, that's where they'll do all the evaluations where how many trips are generated per day based on the use and. Um, and and that'll all be evaluated at that time, in which case that that's when Tech Stop then generates, okay, you have met, met the threshold for a diesel lane. Okay, you've met the threshold for this. And that kind of dictates what types of improvements have to be put in this.
Good question. Do you know what the daily traffic amount is on eighty for that area?
We do not um, at this time, but oftentimes when you're in the site planning and subdivision phase and you're doing your traffic analysis, you have to take counts at that time. And so that way you can take current traffic, your forecasted traffic and do the evaluation. And then they forecast it too, so it'll be ten years for me. No, that's a.
I just wanted to ask the council, have, have, somebody mentioned where it was against this butterfly meadows, is that the subdivision that you said?
Kind of you.
Skyview.
I mean, did those residents have any, have they been old or do they have opportunity to make any statements to the council to?
Yes.
They, I mean, I know that people got the word, I know Terry talked about how her neighborhood got to represent when there was a projected soccer field and they decided they didn't want it. Has that opportunity been given to the neighborhood to have a direct effect?
The um, Chair of Planning and Zoning can tell you the rule about who gets told.
We're talking about the. Well, the two hundred feet, well, the exact, the joint landowners get it certified later.
And I believe she said they're three hundred feet.
No, they're not. So they're not being told because they're far enough away from you.
Yeah, anybody that was two hundred feet or more.
I will, um, I will, I will also just chime in on that. We, I also sent letters and um, the, the portion of the, I sent them to an expanded to capture more people. Um, to some of those neighbors that are adjacent, got letters from, from me with my letterhead on it and my contact information. I didn't hear anything. Um, and um, so, and 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 I think a house to the south across eighty was also notified. Um, but I do that for all of my projects and usually people chime in. Four or five neighbors.
I assume none, none of those people are here.
I don't know.
Anybody in that area that are affected, so.
I do have a question. The essential plan that you have here, um, are you taking, are you using the whole property all the way to the property line in the back and the city limits?
That's what confused me the first time.
Go up a little bit higher in that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's the problem. What is, what is the, what is this uh, big green area going to be?
Just raw land. I mean, obviously it's going to be, I I guess the site naturally drains that way, so that's where the, the drainage facilities will be.
This is how you're going to beat the impervious cover.
Right, exactly.
You're going to need to leave that unimproved.
Exactly.
For that purpose.
Exactly. And then same with this um, easement here.
Yeah, and that one makes sense, obviously, because you've got, you know, other activities and other people there.
Mm hmm.
Giving a little room is wise.
Right.
You know? But I just want to go on record that that, that's, that's what I was expecting. I just wanted to clarify because I'm very big on the impervious cover.
Uh, yeah.
My neighbor across the street is shaking her hand because she is as well, um, with regard to that, so want to clarify.
Do you have input from the city engineers?
Yeah, that, uh, our engineers are only on Zoom, is Gary here? No, here's Tony with Anderson. Is anybody?
Just give you the contents, there is, as far as I know, there's only one drive-through permit that's been approved in the city and that was Paco Felice. Plus, they do have a drive-through permit. Plus, they do have a drive-through permit, I believe they're the only one in the city that has a drive-through permit. So yeah, request for the second and/or I'm the third.
Well, I think Greg Barnes has one, but they don't use.
They, they do?
They have a drive.
I, I guess I'll bring up, remember the discussion we had about the PID numbers? Can you kind of explain, I had, I had a question, since the property's been surveyed. I know it's had a survey, but it has not been submitted to the, to the county.
Right.
Put it on their tax roll, appraisal dish. Could you explain about PIDs and why it doesn't have a PID, that'd be, that's for the, for the audience.
Yes, okay, so this track does have a PID, which is a property ID number for the county, um for Caldwell County to assess property taxes. So right now, our current PID number covers way more than just the six acres. So we have, there is one PID number.
Correct.
Um and that's not uncommon. And so in, in the, the only purpose and reason behind a PID number again is so that the county appraisal districts can assess taxes. So then you come kind of to the city level in terms of development. Um that's where, that's, that's where you have to start submitting your legal lot, which is separate and apart from the PID number. The legal lot is to ensure that you have, it's a safe lot and you've got, it meets all the code and requirements for lot frontage and lot size and all of those things. So what we have right now is a surveyed piece of land. Um uh it's called meets and bounds, which basically is a, a professional surveyor goes out there and it's meets and bounds or stamped by a professional surveyor that identifies the property, which is what we have in front of you and which is what we have applied for this SUP form. So once we move forward through the development process, then we will subdivide this property and it'll be an actual legal lot that we can then move forward with development. And we will also get a new PID number that will make our property a separate taxing entity for the appraisal district.
For the county, okay.
For the county, exactly.
Thank you for your clarification.
It seems to me like you would almost have to subdivide it prior to saying, well, we're gonna develop these other parcels in the future. If you already know that this is a six acre parcel, then normally you come to the city and say, well, we're gonna subdivide this and it's gonna be a portion of a bigger piece. So I would think that you would ask to subdivide it first, knowing the amount that you want to use as opposed to saying, so we're gonna be doing this later.
Yeah, so let's say we do not get approval for our request this evening. Um and this developer leaves and they are, are no longer under contract. They now may find another buyer who needs more land. And so in order to dictate a lot and to understand exactly how much land needs to be sold or purchased, you need a use. And so it's the use kind of component where they can, the owner and the buyer can then move forward um with, with surety on exactly how much land needs to be purchased.
I see, okay.
Funny. Hey. I guess we're closing uh public comment at uh seven, seven forty-three. Uh so down to action items. Uh three point one, uh recommendation to city council on specific use permit for scenic corridor. Discussion on possible vote on SUP for parcel ID number two, seven, eight, nine, seven, drive-through window in scenic core. So.
My, and so for city council, you're only gonna, this specific use permit is for three items, the gas station and two drive-throughs. Just keep that in mind. We all good, okay. Okay, so that's all you want.
Do we have a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion uh to uh recommendation to city council on the specific use permit for the scenic corridor. Discussion on SUP for parcel ID two, seven, eight, nine, seven, drive-through window in scenic corridor.
When you say drive-through window and gas.
And gas station, sorry, it wasn't on that, and gas station. Do we have a, a second?
I'm gonna second it just for the purpose of discussion.
That's what I thought he said, was for the purpose of discussion.
That says discussion, well.
Not action?
It says discussion, possible vote.
Okay.
So. Yes.
You're, you're making a motion to approve it.
I'm just making a motion.
No, you're making.
I'm in motion to approve it, yes, I get you, I'm making a motion.
You're approving. Want to clarify, right?
Oh, you got me, man.
Seconded it, right?
So we're not seconding that, hold on.
Oh, you sucker.
No, no.
Okay.
Discussion?
We gotta have a sec, we have a sec, we have a discussion, you're gonna make this, you're gonna.
Are we running our normal methodology or are we running some other methodology here? Where we go second and then discussion, are we doing that?
Sorry.
I second for discussion.
Discussion. Now we can discuss it.
Any questions, comments?
Um, I like the design of the building, I like the incorporation of the brick uh and the facade. Uh I like the setback off of eighty, but I feel like the proximity of something such as a gas station that, that'll be open for, we don't know yet how many, how late into the night that that is something that's too close in proximity to sky view, even though you do have the buffer of the transmission lines. And it's also quite frankly so close to those transmission lines. So uh I think we already have two gas stations on our highway net, I think, I know we do. And, and, and I think that suffice, I mean, even though this one is modern, it's got a drive-through lane and that's modern and great and it's got landscaping, I would like to see a plan that does not have a gas station.
Well, is it, would we have an opportunity to maybe ask the people who are in close proximity to the project? I mean, could we ask to see if anyone?
They were, they were asked to come here, nobody.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, we're the deciding determining factor and I, I, I just feel that a, a twelve pump gas station, I mean, it, it isn't like Buc-E's where they've got a hundred and twenty, but we, we've got twelve pumps there. And um I think with the gas stations we have now, we're doing fine. We have people that come from outside of Martindale and use our gas stations and use, use our, our facilities and that's fine. I would like to see something that has a core of retail businesses that do not have a gas station.
Well, you know, my personal opinion, I, if I had my choice, I would, let's let the town not grow at all. And you know, they're coming up with some really nice looking structures that looks like our downtown. It's not close to the river, you remember, I'm the one that stopped the first, the first, the first truck stop, it was three hundred feet from the river. That was unacceptable, it was a truck stop, it was diesel. This, this is a nice architectural design, I said, the city needs revenue, we need a tax base and you know, it's gonna grow, the town's gonna grow, you know, and just look at San Marcos. I mean, they've got a Murphy's gas station on the Blanco River. Is that a proper place for a gas station with diesel? I don't think so, but it happened. But they're, they're away from the river. I know we had to do traffic studies, but you know, this town needs, it's gonna grow. And these people are, are, are having, are doing the right thing with these structures that pervious cover. They're, they're working with us, so I think would be a, a good project. And you would have retail, you'd have uh, you know, grocery, drive-in, healthy food or whatever, but I'm. But you can laugh all, but I'm saying the growth's gonna come, the growth's gonna come. I don't like it either, but this is the way it is, look what's going on. The only thing that really concerns me personally is the sewer, is the sewer treatment. And that's gonna be down the road, that is a, that is the biggest issue for me. I, I'm a river guy, that's why I got elected to council. And I had concerns about that treatment plant, our capacity, lift station, infrastructure, all that. That's my main concern. But again, I, I think uh, I think it looks like a good project to me. So that's my two cents worth.
And the only thing I really like about is the pervious cover, which the rest are really careless.
I like the design, the pervious cover, I think the dark sky compliance, if that's gonna happen. But I mean, if it has to be compliant with all the, the city ordinances and things like that, then how would they be able to get around that? I mean, I guess, like she said, if someone thought it was being violated, then they would call and have somebody enforce that.
But she said you were, you were compliant to all of our ordinances.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, we don't, that's not a joke, right, right, I mean, we have to.
What, what I guess our position is, we don't want coming back in three months from now asking for a variance.
Right.
And that is, we've had this discussion with developers in the past to come in and, you know, we're being, we're a little difficult to work with because our pervious cover limits are higher than, or you know, more restrictive, yeah, more restrictive, lower uh than a lot of other places. And it's basically because we love the river and um that's to me the biggest concern that, that we have.
Is that the typical variant that is being requested is pervious cover?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I think there was a lot of thought put into this particular site, how much land is being purchased to ensure that we will not be back for a variance.
It certainly looks that way, that's, that was, like, thank you.
Yeah.
So I guess, I want to hear it again, maybe nobody else, I want to hear the step process again. We get the special use permit and go through the process.
No, I'll do it as many times.
Go for it, that's where everybody understands this process.
So it'll be, so entitlements is step one, which is where we are now, that includes zoning, SUPs, certificates of appropriateness, conditional use permits, basically everything that kind of makes sure we can do the use. Um if a C-one allowed a gas station by right, we would be done. But since it doesn't, we're here in front of you this evening for these entitlements. Then it's the subdivision process, um where we lay out the lot and then it's the site planning process where we design the site, we design the pond, we get our driveway permit in TechStar. Um after the site plan is approved, we can then start construction. Um once construction is completed, inspectors come in to make sure that it was built to the specifications in Olivia's plans. Um and then once that seems um compliant, then there's a certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
And again, eighteen months, I mean, it's a very long.
I, I had a question about the diagram that I have here, if you see the lot, you see that it's wider here on the highway, but then it's narrowed down at the back.
Uh huh.
So how can that be three hundred feet on the back end? It's, it's, it's wider here, but then it's narrower, closer to the sky view.
Uh huh.
It's not a straight line. Why, why isn't that a straight line?
I'd say that, that property in between those is not part of the, of this plan or this parcel. In addition to what you're seeing there, there's an easement. So if you go to the uh area that's highlighted up on.
Utility, is it right?
Right, if you see what's highlighted on gray.
Utilities.
Right, in addition, in that gray area, there's an additional easement in that place.
Yeah.
So go to the, no, go to the um site flat, uh to the serving, I'd rather say, further, further down.
Other way.
Other way, there, uh further down, okay, and towards the top north. Okay, so you can see sky, uh sky view. And then after that, there's uh an independent lot that somebody owns, and I think it's an authority uh like a company, a water company at Glee that owns that parcel. And then within the tract, the six acre tract, there's an easement, there's a water easement.
This is.
Yes.
Doesn't be.
That is correct.
That's an eighty-five foot easement.
Yes.
So between sky view and then the, the old easement is.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure of that because it, it didn't show that easement on, on this picture.
Any, any more discussion, council, mayor? Okay.
Well, okay, all right, fine, I'll just say one thing.
Go for it.
Um, so I guess, Mike, I'm, I'm um, I've done a lot of thinking about this set of proposals. And like you were saying, I think the town is gonna grow. And we can either decide that we want to um allow that to happen or we can keep losing both property taxes and sales taxes to Hayes County and to um especially San Marcos is ETJ, that they're like making a, a complete horseshoe around us. And they're gonna continue to do that. And if we need to have business because we are never gonna afford roads and water treatment or anything else that everybody here really wants, unless we increase our income. And if you look at the city, um thanks to Mayor Glaze, we did a couple of charm workshops last year where we, where we looked at different places that were building and flooding that was happening, um like where, where our floodlines are, where properties are building and what that does to increase or decrease flooding. And our best bet is going to be to develop a long eighty. It's not in the middle of anyone's neighborhood, it might be next to, but something's gonna be next to something anywhere we build it. It's separate, it's got some space in between and it keeps people from driving through Hobson or through Skyview or through downtown to get where they're trying to go to do business. And I don't know, I really don't know the best idea about welcoming in another gas station. I don't want to be at Giddings, I love the people at Giddings. But I'm sure I would love them, I'm sure they're wonderful people. But I don't want to be like this strip on eighty that the only thing people know about us is that we have a lot of fast food and gas stations. And when we've done visioning before, no one wants that. We all want mom and pop shops, we all want to have places that have personality, um but that are not.
That are still small businesses.
That are small businesses. And so I don't, I don't exactly know how does this fit with that, except that there's no reason that we have to envision that just because there's a drive-through means it's gonna be junk food, although it could be.
Could be a bank.
It could be a bank, it could be a, a smoothie shop, it could be a coffee shop, it could be anything.
Pharmacy.
A pharmacy. And a pharmacy doesn't have to be CVS, when I saw that big arch, I thought that looks like a CVS.
Could, could be a.
It could be a B and J's, and B and J's has drive-through. So I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I do know that we need to eventually allow somebody to build here or we might as well just close up the town. Because if we just keep saying no to everyone that wants to come here, we don't have the income to support that kind of life. I would love to not worry about working, but I wouldn't be able to pay my mortgage, right? We have to eventually allow somebody to be here or we cannot continue to be a city, we don't have the income for it. Individual private residences don't pay enough, although it feels like we pay way too much. We don't get enough of that in the city. So we're gonna have to make some difficult choices and decide either to not be a city or whatever, but I don't know how we can do all of it at one time.
Oh, if I may just add some perspective, if that's fine. We're kind of a developer today, um we own this tract and you know, that's why I'm here. We used to own way more tract uh and uh we still own some stuff here and we do developments in different parts. I believe Martine is a special place, right? That's why we bought here and we believe here and since we acquired property, we've had some uh lessons, like, and, and I appreciate for those, those lessons. But um it is honestly very difficult as a developer to build here. And that's fine, but us, develop, like developers are the only people that are gonna be investing with the community to make things happen here so that there's enough income. And if someone's here providing a proposal that meets the ordinances, says they've looked at what the community needs and wants are. Work gets around developers and if there's constant no, 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 eventually what developers do is they try to get key annexed from the city ETJ and that's happening.
It's already happened.
Okay, and it becomes more difficult later on for the city to try to guide and control a sustainable growth or development that meets the community needs, so. my my feeling on this, if something like this and um gets pushed back to a no, it's it's gonna be very difficult for other developers to. Uh, because essentially they're complying with.
Everything. If they go to the county, there is no impervious cover thing. There is no dark sky ordinance. There aren't any of those requirements.
And and I will say another point, I've been on council longer, I've been in this is my fourth term. And there was a truck stop proposed and it was uh only three hundred feet from the San Marcos River. And I was totally against it. I mean, the the retention pond, it was, I mean, the worst possible place. A truck stop right next to the precious, that's why I ran, the precious San Marcos River. And that's why I ran and I think this, these have safeguards being the distance from the river. You have the impervious cover, you're willing to follow our ordinances. I think it's a good and I'll I'll be, and for example, that's a conceptual plan on those buildings. You could eliminate the arch. It's just a. Of some of your your buyers' developments, like what he's done.
Yeah, but they do vary architecturally.
So we, so there could be.
Later, when they do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, we're we're not set in stone with the arches, but you're you are, you want to copy our downtown with the red brick.
Exactly. It's 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 the architectural intent of incorporating red brick.
Like I said, you know, we could be like Santa Fe. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
Was there some sort of like needs assessment or something done? Why?
Okay, we got.
Gas station in this section. I mean, we do need new business, definitely. We need new revenue, we need all that, but why this particular.
Thanks, thanks for your comment, but we have a, we have a motion and a second. It's time for roll call. Okay, I want, are you saying, are we just, I'm sorry, continue. I thought you were about wrapped up.
He asked a question.
Okay, but I'll I'll just let you know, we 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 let you talk because it's usually a discussion between the council and us. But you could go ahead and finish your statement. Sorry if I interrupted you.
It was a question of what, was there a need to set but done?
Give you my card if that's helpful.
Yeah, just do that. Yeah, because we're going to be here till midnight, you know, so.
No, 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 no.
We got other meetings to do.
It's a question for people to know and understand why this this decision, which is a big decision, is being made.
Yeah, I think we're discussing it right now.
Well, and we're.
Oh, and y'all been, y'all been fully, this little town's cool, we're fully.
Yeah, I'm connecting some dots, so slow maybe, you know, forgive me.
We're all slow.
Connecting some dots and I'm asking some questions.
Go for it, go for it.
So I would like the.
Um, the answer to that is is yes, absolutely. A lot of in-depth markets that we're and it has to do with the road move type. So being on a highway um with that kind of access, at least over here is important. And then also. Believe the nearest gas station, I know the city is like, but it is almost a mile away, which in terms of gas stations is a pretty significant distance because sometimes they'll be like, catty corner to each other. Um, so those are the kind of things that are coming into into play. But they definitely look into it, like market studies.
Well, do they look at the traffic? How much traffic goes through there?
Um, in terms of safety or in terms of the market?
In ter- in terms of the market, like how many cars could be passing there that would that would potentially use their business?
Yeah, I think it has more, I don't think they did. So you can do traffic counts. We have those little tubes that go across and you know exactly how many cars. So nothing like that was done, but generally being located on um a larger road or arterial or, you know, at the corner of two arterials, something like that is is ideal for this type of use.
The other. Could you keep it real short?
Yes, very, very short. Um, what happens if we agree with this and then text dot says no or text dot says yes? I do not understand how you're going to mitigate the 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 thing. Is the traffic that backs up unless y'all are planning on putting in if the city is planning on putting stop signs.
It'd be text shot doing that.
That that will come with a review to text shot. So like I had mentioned, if if our, you know, this development is not responsible for fixing. And this is just the way traffic analysis, okay, I'm sorry.
If text dot says no to what y'all plan, then what are y'all planning to do?
They will not say no. They will find the safest and best location on this site.
Thanks.
It's not yet.
Go ahead.
Quick question. So we're talking about this parcel here on this end and another parcel.
Yes, separate.
And then a third space in between for access ingress to a third parcel in between here. So text shot's going to have to approve three decel and turn lanes into this parcel?
It, we don't know yet. I mean, it could be joint access, it could be, I mean, it it's it's all about the distance. The text not had very specific distance requirement. Um, so if our driveways meets the spacings that they have in places deemed a safe distance, then they'll permit a a driveway for that. Otherwise, they um put in other measures, but again, it just, we're not to that stage yet.
You got it. You got it, Mr. Vinnie. Okay, we have a motion and a second. How do we vote? Mr. Clinton?
No.
Terry, how do you vote? Don't Florida can't vote. Oh, okay.
She's still PZ. She's.
But she's on P. Oh, I'm sorry. You go right ahead.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
There you go.
Okay, so the approval or the recommendation for a gas station and a and two drive-throughs on this specific lot. Correct? Is that is that right, Ken?
Correct.
So now we're going to move on to the scenic corridor application for the same piece of land. We did a presentation for somewhat both already, so.
Okay. So we're.
Approval of.
It's approval.
Of the scenic look.
Yes.
The building.
Yes.
Set backs.
Yes.
Set backs, all that.
And you could also just, yeah, it's all you.
So, but it passes. Uh, again, huh?
Wait, there another vote for the same.
Same, we got this one. Do we have to leave this?
I mean.
We've just approved this.
Specific use, but we got to go review other, and you've done the subdivision plan, right? So, okay, so maybe we ought to, perhaps we had maybe table that.
Or are they lumped together on one item? Did we just vote on all of it?
Essentially, that's how I perceive it. Ken, refer to you for that one.
Yeah.
So so they they would be, they would be two separate things, but is there a recommendation, and I know you've mentioned this, Mike, from the city's engineer, because.
Yeah, we need the engineer, you know, so I would, since we don't have the engineer, we don't have.
But he did give, he did give his recommendation. He sent an email.
Okay, then let's, yeah, we've got that email, then.
We're still talking about their.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we have not moved on.
We may, we pass three point one, three point two.
It's been lumped together, but.
It was confusing to make, to be honest with you, so.
I believe we have to vote twice.
You gotta vote twice. You you can't, you can't do it as a one.
We gotta vote twice. We gotta vote for three point two.
I think it was.
Well, it says it's there, it says Skyview Drive Lot One Block A.
Okay, something else.
Well, that's a, I mean, I'm I'm a little, it's all lumped together, but I know there's another one coming up, so. We probably need to, you're taking care of, we probably need to table this guy. I'm, go ahead.
We're we're down to table the subdivision flat. I think the question is, do we need a separate vote on the scenic corridor? Certificate of Appropriations.
Yeah, yeah, you do. Yep.
Okay, so we need to do it, so we need to do a motion. I make a motion to approve the scenic corridor uh for the SUV for parcel ID two seven eight nine seven, drive-through in the window, it's scenic corridor.
I second the approval of the scenic corridor permit.
Discussion? No discussion? Okay, how do we vote? Mr. Clinton?
Uh, no.
Terry?
Yes.
Uh, mayor?
That's.
Yes. Mr. Governor?
Yes.
I vote yes, so passes. Okay, three point two.
So they don't have a.
They don't have a.
Yeah, so there was a curve or error with the application. So technically, for reality, the other application is for a scenic corridor application.
That's a separate, that's a separate.
And this is the one, yeah, and this is the one that's going on the other end.
Got it, got it.
And so again, it's only looks, only approval of the looks and only approval of just the facade of the.
So just to clarify, this three point two, that has nothing to do with her project.
I'm going to leave, so there's no.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm I'm a, I've been confused. It's kind of lumps right here.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
But this is, this is ours.
That's that's your subdivision class, right? And so conceptually, conceptually.
So this is the other.
This is the other project. So we're finished. I'm confused. Okay, I got it. Done.
This is the next project.
Got it.
From the same piece of land, and it's just approval of this portion of the piece of land.
Okay.
This is the layout.
We need to have it, we need to have a presentation.
It's, there's no presentation, it's just what's in the application from them.
Are those individuals here?
He is here.
Can you do a presentation for us, sir?
Yes, sir.
Sorry for the confusion. I was confused. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Reagan Doss. My name's Reagan Doss.
Wait, say say your name again.
Reagan Doss.
Reagan Doss.
And I work for TVN Development uh and Lot Brothers Construction Company, their sister companies. Um, we're based out of Round Rock, Texas. Uh, we're a family owned and operated business. Been greater Austin area for over forty years. It was founded by David and Wayne Lot in the nineteen uh sixties, or sorry, seventies. Um, their father was a developer in Austin and we believe in in uh sustainable growth. That's that's why I'm here. I want to introduce our company so you guys can be familiar with our company, familiar with our project and familiar with who we are. We don't want to come across as a developer who's going to come in here and not understand the community and what y'all's needs are. We want to come into this community and serve the community with y'all need and what y'all are wanting. Um, so based on kind of some of the conversations we've heard tonight and y'all, y'all expressing your needs, y'all need y'all want growth, but I understand y'all want sustainable growth. Y'all don't want somebody to come in and wipe out the tradition, wipe out the culture and the history of this town. And that's not what we're looking to do. Uh, we're looking to bring a commercial business park. Speak on this. The arrangements we brought up. Uh, do you mind scrolling?
First of all, can we, can we show the plan?
Yes.
Show the, show the, show the, show the sideline. Show us, show us where it's at on the.
So we're, we're also on Highway eighty.
Let's just, let's get up so everybody can see this. Or whatever.
Zoom out.
Yeah, thank you. So we're not correcting it from wrong, but the gas station is right here.
Yeah, further. It's actually further on.
Further, further.
Further left.
Yeah, okay. And there's land in between us and we're right here.
So where's, where's Quail running?
Well, it's right here.
Okay, so there's another lot, there's another, that's a six acre.
Yeah, so I'm not sure the size of that one, but we are six acres.
Okay, so it's two, really, it's one twelve acre tract. Gotcha. Honestly, thank you.
That was our orig- original application we submitted in January. There's a more kind of site plan, I think. No, one more. It was one that said, I'm going to draft the discussion. It's pretty similar, so we can, we can touch on it, so. We're proposing a fifty thousand four hundred square foot business park development. Um, it's zone C one. And we're applying for a scenic corridor application. So we want approval on our site plan in our, in our architectural design. So we we can completely intend to follow all the regulations on the scenic corridor, including the landscape buffer, pension uh building buffer, and then the architectural design.
Any impervious cover?
And absolutely, yes, sir. Impervious cover. This cyclone here then reflect it, but there's an updated site plan that has, that meets the fifty percent impervious cover regulation. Um, we sized the site when we were buying the, we haven't bought the land yet. We're looking to purchase the land, but we were making sure that we hit the fifty percent impervious cover because we know that's environmentally, that's, that's what we're looking to do. It's sustainable and we're not looking to come in and and disrupt the environment, so. What we're looking to do is bring small business to this town, um serve mom and pop businesses, whether it's restaurant service oriented oriented retail, whether it's a barber shop, um a bank, could be uh, you know, any fitness, could be a gym, it could be gymnastics.
So so no, no industrial?
So it could be, it could be a subcontractor. It would all be very, very light industrial. It wouldn't be any uh anything harmful to the environment. So some of our projects in the past that we've had uh subcontractors, so garage door, subcontractor will come in, use warehouse space.
Okay.
Have some office in the front, store their garage doors while they're, before they go install them on their project, or it could be um a granite.
It would, it would, it would be a battery manufacturer.
No, no. And we, and we specifically create condo regulations. So we, we are in complete control of who comes into these business parks. We want to make sure that it's, the uses are compatible with the community, with the the other uses in the business park, so. Yeah, my point is, we're looking to meet the community's needs, whether it's restaurants, supporting mom and pop businesses, supporting local business, generating tax revenue. Uh, I want to keep it short, that's, and we can go down to the renderings to show the architectural.
Well, here, I just had a quick question. You, you mentioned fifty percent impervious ground cover. Could, could, could we see that previous slide? I mean, by the vast look of those parking lots and buildings, where are you, where are you getting fifty percent?
That's, that's not, we updated it since we, I'm not sure.
The, this is what was submitted in the application. We pulled from whatever was from the application.
Yeah.
Let me look for the other one. I need to look inside Jared's email real quick.
That's all right.
I think I would just like to clarify a matter on that. I think uh previously there's been a lot of different meetings with staff just to ensure that we're uh or rather that they're going to be required ordinances. This is the first revision of that set. That was updated, but it's not. That image right there, don't refer to it, it's not what the actual look and feel of it is. And it's an action of it may be that the correct sign is what gets endorsed or not.
But but how can we say that we're going to endorse the direct plan? If I look at that parcel of land, I I see six buildings, two orange, three yellow, green and one blue, and then I just see vast amounts of concrete. I see no landscaping, no trees. I don't see any green space. So how? I I want to know, how big is that parcel of land and how are you saying that you're only putting fifty percent impervious ground cover? And to me, it looks like about ninety percent.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify, the the issue is probably what gun, putting the agenda tag is is not correct. That's, that's not the plan. That's.
Be looking at that. Why are, why are we looking?
Let it, let it speak, let it speak. Okay, go continue, continue.
I would copyright here.
Okay, good.
You tried to show us that a couple of times, haven't you?
So it's, it's fifty percent. We fully, and this, and like Ms. Brown was stating, this is just the just conceptual entitlement phase. This would go into a site development permit process where you have to comply with a fifty percent. We would be, we'd be.
I I I guess with the confusion. I, I, I guess what the confusion is, go ahead, show the, show the, the highway eighty, that's what's confusing to everybody.
Which one?
All the way up with the, with the highway eighty, where the plant's gonna be, keep going, keep going.
That's the one?
No, it's the other one, the, with the highway eighty, the, the satellite.
This is the other one? That's the other application.
The, the other one then, you have, keep going.
What are you trying to look for, Mike?
A picture of a, thought we had one of the.
Yeah, so this is it.
Nothing on the.
Where's circles? Sure you see. Yeah. So, yeah, that, we have our detention pond in the front.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be, that'd be part of the landscape buffer, we'd landscape it real nicely, put a lot of shrubs and plants in there, um, and that'd be set back off the highway, and yeah, so.
So you're, this, your, this is kind of what you're gonna design it to look like?
Yeah, so we, we're, our intention is to match the, uh, Martindale historic look of like corrugated galvanized metal panels, but also mix in a modern design with storefront. So we want to meet modern, but mix it with historic meeting the Martindale culture of the galvanized metal.
Is there any, is there any way to kind of make it look like downtown, like she did with the brick, uh, I mean, it could have a facade or?
My answer, that would be, brick is expensive.
I mean, something of a near that looks like brick.
Brick's expensive, and we're trying, our intention is to, to make this affordable for small business, um, if we're, if our goal is to, to sell this to small businesses, ultimately, this project is not possible if the cost don't make sense for the developer, so our, with, we're trying to make this an affordable product, end product for the end user, while also making it something that makes sense for the developer to come into it, so. Brick, brick is.
I understand about brick, but I was, is there, is there any, so you're proposing all metal?
Full brick?
Yeah, there's, I, I think, I need, we need to talk with the developer, but I'm, I think the galvanized look is the look we're going for, I think it looks good with the storefront.
Okay. You know, you've, you've seen the, uh, a lot of industrial parks have that tilt wall.
Yeah, I think ours, um, you actually want to pull up our website, I don't know if that'd be beneficial.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Is it TBN Development, right?
Yes.
If you got projects you've done before, it'd be.
Yes, sir, yeah, we've done projects in, uh, Williamson County. Yeah, it is. So it'd be slightly different than this, we wouldn't have the big garage doors in the front, we probably have those in the buildings in the back, um, but it would match the, uh, that's our home office, and now we're.
Do you have like a picture?
Yeah, go to, uh, projects, click on rolling oats, so it's sort of getting one. So this is one that.
Okay.
Um, it's like a nice retail look, uh, we take metal panels and we try to mix colors and patterns to make them look nice with, with big storefront and.
It almost looks like brick.
Yeah, so that's a wood look, that's a wood look panel, um, we'd be open to that as well, but we, we were looking to match the galvanized metal look, so we're open to a number of things, my, my main goal is tonight is to.
Please. We're, let the band talk.
My main goal tonight is to introduce this product type and get feedback from the council, and ultimately get approval for the scenic corridor application we're presenting, so.
As far as, as what's allowed in our supplemental use table, is light industrial allowed in C one? Can, can, can we look at the supplemental use table of, of C one and see what is exactly allowed in C one? Because I thought that we had a different zoning for industrial.
Yeah, I guess I want to clarify, light industrial, it's very ambiguous on what you could call light industrial or not, or or commercial or office, so our product is a lot of office for, for small business, so we don't have people coming in with big chemicals or, uh, laundry mats or stuff like that, that look on the environment, our, our use type is generally storage and office space, so.
Yeah, just, uh, by way of context, um, I know, no, nobody's gone to our offices at Manzola, but essentially Manzola, uh, when we acquired the building, it was a, a shell structure, uh, and now that's where we operate. Beautiful building, we've got fifteen people working there, uh, and it's, it's this beautiful building that from outside, it, it's got that look and feel, uh, but inside the actual use is, is an office space, uh, here, we haven't, or, or, TBM's not designating yet the specific uses, if they're going to be applied for any specific uses, uh, the intention is whatever the structures eventually get built on, and the operators within those, uh, spaces, we have to comply with the uses within C one.
Okay, so, so can, can we just look at what's permitted in C one from the top of that page, real, just really quick, so we all know what's allowed in, in C one?
Yeah.
Okay, C one, is this where the person is at?
So it's second to last. Okay, so we've got, the first one is, what's, what's that first B there?
That.
Headed breakfast, law, and then, I'm not gonna go over special use, there's fraternities and caretakers.
I promise, I promise we won't have any Texas state fraternities.
There's a church, the Parson Institute Civic Center, college, university, museum slash art gallery, daycare, uh, another friend, stuff, government building, hospital, library, nursing home, parks, rec, school, public, private, uh, utilities, which is limited, office and health, retail, and then commercial use is restaurants, restaurants dine in, already went over that, already went over that, uh, financial institutions, barber and beauty shops, salons, hotel, motel, funeral homes, rental kiosks, laundry, laundry and dry cleaning. There any else?
I don't see anything in industrial there at all, except the laundry mat, maybe. And that would be like dry cleaning.
Here's the industrial side.
A lot of chemicals, so I, I, I really don't see any industrial.
Uh-huh, so, yeah, I mean, clarify here. Clarify, so right now, we're just trying, uh, looking to get the shell component of it, the bridge, with the architectural look and the site plan.
Right.
And later, when we either lease these out or sell them to small businesses, they, those businesses would come in, and if the use is not permitted by right, they would come in and do a special use permit on their own. But for now, we're just trying to get the shell and the architectural look.
Yeah, anybody from the public wants to ask this gentleman any questions, it's your time. Go for it.
How many spaces are there?
There's fifty thousand four hundred square feet.
Oh, no, spaces, like how many different spaces?
Parking spaces are like business.
Uh, like office spaces, business spaces.
Ten, twenty-two, thirty. Yeah, we break them, we break them into eighteen hundred square foot units, they can be broken up, so on our previous projects, we've had some businesses like come in and buy one whole building, uh, but it can be up to thirty, so it's not necessarily going to be thirty different businesses, most likely will be ten to, ten to twelve, fifteen, somewhere in there, there's some like, some, some people take two units, some people take four, whatever.
So it's like a strip mall without the strip?
Yes.
Yeah, in Vegas, most of them are all twelve hundred, you buy most of them Midwest, or eighteen hundred is a pretty standard block size. Um, it just depends on the, you get down to downtown Austin, everything, everything they do is going to be smaller, they're trying to get more bang for the buck, so this is pretty normal, eighteen hundred is a pretty standard number.
And this is, you're in the same, are you in the same phase as the proposal before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't need that basis, but we know what's coming.
The, the one, the one question I have is, you have a drive through?
So, yeah, that's a, that's a topic that we would love to get a special use permit for that.
Which you're not applying for now.
No, sir, we want to separate that from the scenic corridor, which the drive through will be applied for later.
And same thing with tech, stop driveways, all that entrances.
Yes.
So, all they're trying to do is get a specific use.
For scenic corridor. And for the looks, I mean, it's really up to y'all, but for the, this is what they submitted, and I don't know if you guys want to see that other development that they had, the, this one.
Yeah, so.
We're open.
I mean, I, I, I call, you know, the metal, I know it's, it's cost effective, but, I mean, we all talked about the red.
Right, to look more like, like a red brick, you know, I don't, I don't expect you to put red brick, but something that'd look like a red brick.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, you go, wait, wait a minute, wait, okay, make a motion.
Can I make a motion to, um?
Wait a minute, real quick, it's, it's written wrong.
So, it's, we're gonna be basing this off, four point, was a public comment, isn't a thing.
Yeah, let me just get it.
Thanks.
This one.
Yeah, it was, it's, it's possible motion, action, there is a clerical stuff.
Number four, there, scratch it out, there.
Number four. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the application for the scenic corridor. Applicant Visara Capital LLC, location parcel ID number two seven eight nine seven, request is a speci- spec- specific use permit to allow and.
There's no specific use permit, it's just a scenic corridor.
A scenic corridor, yeah, that's what I.
I'd like to add something, possible to say, if possible, make it look like, like our downtown red brick buildings, with a facade, if that's possible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I'll just be honest, I don't think financially it makes sense for this project.
Okay, well, I will, I will just, okay.
But it can be as the image, I can just with the.
Yeah, so there's wood look panels, if that's something you.
Let's look at some wood looks.
That does not look like.
So, yeah, our, our intention was.
Because it has so much glass, it almost looks like a, a car dealership.
So go to.
You got some that look like wood, if you got something like that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's hard to tell in that kind of rendering, um, but we were looking to match the galvanized look with the metal.
Well, you're, you mean, what, what you're showing us.
Not here, on a, on the.
So that, that's about as close as you're gonna look to a wood as that, as a red?
Yeah, I don't know if the renderings necessarily fit true or incorrect, but.
What is the top part made out of?
Uh, it's just a metal panel.
Does it have to be black?
It's a charcoal gray, uh, but there's, yeah, it comes in black, comes in a number of different colors.
Would there be a preference for like galvanized steel?
I mean, that is, that might be.
Yeah, because.
More, well, might look more like downtown than.
Go ahead.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have, we, we had, we got a motion, not a second, yeah, we didn't have a discussion, you're right, you're correct.
After, after the second.
Okay, okay, I'll second, I'll second your motion, okay, now we have a discussion, go ahead. So.
Y'all, y'all talked about making it look like the silos that are right here and such, the, the metal at least, council?
Yeah, we definitely like, have a look more like the silos, yes.
Okay, I'll make you notice that.
I mean, could we do, could we do like, can we, could we do like a general term, like, to resemble our historic downtown? I mean, make it kind of vague.
Would it?
I'd like to see it, uh, a reverse there, where you're doing, uh, but you can't do that upper facade in any other, you said it, that's in a charcoal, like a dark.
I always said he could do it metal color, like.
Does it come in, does it come in a red? Like a brick color?
I would use it, let's talk with our, with our owners, see if that's something they're willing to do, so, ultimately, they gotta feel comfortable with this product being able to sell, or else it doesn't make sense for.
I mean, we're, we're, we're really not asking a whole lot. I, no, I mean, we're, 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 we're agreeing, we're agreeing with you that you have to, have to be economical scale. Sure, it has to be a metal building. Um, so, so, I'm not finished, Mr. Clint, so economics is scaled with the structure, and I know about building, so at, at that point, I'm, I can say to, like they said, the silos, to make it a general thing, to resemble our historic downtown, I don't, I don't expect you to do brick, sure.
So, yeah, we're happy, we're happy to do, mix up a bunch of different looks on the metal panels and find something that council is happy with, with the metal panel.
Appreciate that.
This is just a recommendation to council, so to the extent that you want to pass it along and let council.
Should we make a, can we make a modification and say in our motion to resemble historic downtown?
Isn't, isn't that later?
Well.
They have to, they have to come back with a different.
And, and, you know, we, he was saying it was an issue, but I'm just saying, it's a general terminology.
Are we approving the colors right today, or we're just approving the style?
None of that.
We're approving the style of the building, if this is correct. I'm okay with the style of the building, the colors obviously are for negotiation, maybe, you know, but, um.
Really just our, our, we're looking to get our concept approved, you know, kind of general site plan, everything very conceptual at this point.
Does anyone have any issues with the style of the building?
Yeah, that's a question.
Well, I mean, I thought we already had concise, exact ruling about what you can and cannot construct in the scenic corridor, because we follow the, the suggestions of what we can do in the scenic corridor based on the buildings that we have around Red Barn, say, or based on the buildings we have here, so we already have in place, which I would hope he could or would have already reviewed, or that we would have presented to him, about the exact, precise rulings that we already have in the scenic corridor, that's why it's called the scenic corridor, and to me, this looks too industrial and too much concrete, because I see parking spaces facing the building, but I don't know why the parking lot is so wide, I mean, are you having parallel parking on the edge there, or, I mean, why is the parking space, why is the concrete so large?
Honey, we can decide that later.
Yeah, that's conceptual.
We'll, we'll wait then, I, I'm just saying, to me, it doesn't look like something that would fit in the parameters we have in place for our scenic corridor, that's, that's all.
So we have a, we, go ahead.
One, one point I want everyone to consider is, like I mentioned with the cost, like, something that retail does require, uh, part of it apartment, and for it to make sense. So with the parking requirement, like tenants or buyers will come in and pay the higher price for the amount of parking provided, but we are looking to stick within the impervious cover limits, but for the deal to make sense, we do need to provide a certain level of parking. And that's, so it's, it's balancing, okay, yes, you need to hit your impervious cover, but you need to provide the deal that makes sense, the right amount of parking for retail use.
Yeah, if you've ever gone to HEB, and you can't get out or in the parking lot, because it's so small, and there's so many people.
Yeah, it's, it's tough for retail, it's.
I'm just saying, when it's, in a parking lot, it doesn't accommodate all the businesses, it's very difficult to get in and out of. So I didn't, I didn't, I honestly didn't know that there was a requirement.
I don't think there is a requirement, I think in other cities there are, which they're getting, like, cities are starting to get rid of that requirement, but tenants specifically look for parking ratios when they're looking for space, and they will not sign a lease on the space for that reason, that's known, that's one of the number one questions they ask, uh, when they're looking for space.
I own UPS stores, it's the number one, the number one thing is, who else is in there already, and the usage, I was right next to a Smith's, which is an HEB on one of my locations, they tried to put us one next to a, a, a twenty-four hour fitness place, and I said, no, thank you, because they come and stay, and the grocery people come and leave within thirty, forty minutes. So you have turnover and parking spots are always available, so the mix is very critical with regard to this, so the number of spots and the mix is one hundred percent, I can tell you every UPS store, all sixty-four of them in Las Vegas, I can tell you exactly which ones, without even looking at the number, based on the platform, where they're located, whether they're going to be successful or not, purely because of the demographics and the breakdown of what is in that shopping center, and how much parking there is, and who the anchor is, and who their neighbor is, and it really, really matters, so, um, anything, I know, it's a struggle.
Yeah, it's tough.
It's a math.
Well, it just, it doesn't, like, we don't want, it's more cost of concrete, and it's more useful space we can put in there, but fortunately, it's a part of each two, and it's just like you're saying.
Yeah, some, some, some tenants are gonna have, they're gonna want a mix of that don't need retail parking, they've got, like you said, some people that use it for storage, basically, very. use it for storage, basically, very little walk-in traffic per se, but maybe have a showroom, but in the back, they're doing it as a window, window warehouse, window trade warehouse, or whatever the case may be, totally different than a vitamin shop, or a, you know, like you said, a UPS store, anything of that, totally different with parking. Gotta get a good mix.
Yes, sir.
You get too much of one, there's a parking problem.
For sure.
So it is right beside Quail Run?
No, it's not.
It's not directly.
Can you put that up, can we, can you put that? I know, but.
I wasn't sure if it's right on Quail Run.
No, it's, go up to the, to the satellite.
I think it's this one, he just.
Yes, right there. Okay, that's it, the Quail Run is right there, so there's, that's the, the previous development was that one, and that's the six acre, and that's a vacant lot this moment.
So you'll adjust the size of your acreage depending on the pervious coverage, whatever the other requirements.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we actually, we're already good, but it's not reflected on the walls.
It's, it's insignificant.
Okay, yeah, for, I guess before the next, would city council go next? This will go to city council next, right?
No, it goes the next week.
Okay.
Can we give the city council a agenda for?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay, so before that meeting, we'll get it corrected with the right site plan.
So.
Can you vote Mike?
Let's vote Mike.
Okay, I vote yay.
Why don't you poll everyone?
Okay.
Mr. Clinton? Yes.
Mr. McGovern?
Yes.
I vote yay, passes.
Bear, I keep, I think you're married, you can't vote.
No. About Terry.
But you voted yes, I'm sorry, Laura.
Cause if she hadn't voted, it wouldn't have been a three to two, so you let, she's, she's on the PNC, so she can.
Yeah, she's, I, I, by mistake, I'm not perfect, okay, how do you vote, Laura? Okay, there's three, and Mr. McGovern, yay, and I, it's unanimous.
Wow, that's been a while since.
That's been a while. Time is six.
I made, I made a motion, we ensured at eight forty-two. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
We vote, say, aye.
Aye.
Aye.